Good morning, and thank you all very much for inviting me. I wanted the opportunity, and I've been talking to many of the councils, just it's really important for us to make sure that people know what your college can provide in our area. Some updates, as well as one of the projects that we have underway right now is our Make Way campaign. So Liz, just I can control my presentation from here?
Yes.
Strive is our new branding under the college, and we went into this marketing campaign about a year and a half ago because we feel that for many of our grads, it really is an opportunity for them to kind of reach higher in terms of going back to college, coming to college. Many of our grads, they are the first post-secondary people in their families, so it's really setting a stage. The college mission is building our economy and quality of life through education innovation, and some of the things that we do here locally, we feel really are stepping up. We hope to have an innovation space, or what's called a maker space, at each of my three sites. I am the principal for Shelburne, Digby, and Yarmouth, and we are presently providing opportunities for people to create their own ideas and innovation. We've got a proposal right now in front of Labor and Advanced Education, so that we can provide innovation space, much like a sandbox that would be open to the communities as well.
Does it move? Mic's gone.
I don't want to hit something and have us change it. So part of our responsibility, both in our province and particularly in our area, is to really work with our community to build the economy. And we work very closely with organizations such as the REN and our municipal units, particularly when we have new industries coming to the area. I'll just kind of leave that in the -- okay, perfect, all right. Just some of the things that are really important to us. Learning is at the core of everything that we do, and when we create learning opportunities, we're not just creating classroom opportunities. Our programming is based on theory, an opportunity to practice that, and then apply it within the community. Our goal is to really prepare our students to go out into the community, and sometimes that may be in their own entrepreneurial activities, as well as for businesses in our community. So making sure that people are career-ready. One of the statistics that I think is really, really important is that 89% of our grads feel that their program has prepared them for their career. And it's not just narrow-focused in terms of the career. In our programming, we try to also include opportunities for students to take the opportunity to get into entrepreneurship. We do an intro to entrepreneurship for every one of our students, so that they can at least get the fundamentals and know that that's an opportunity. We utilize guest speakers and project learning, and I'll show you one of the projects in a few minutes. Two-thirds of all job openings from 2011 on require college or university. A number of years ago, grade 12 was sufficient, now it is not. Most employers are looking for more than simply a high school graduation. We're very lucky here at Burridge and with my Digby site, all five academic schools are operating here. So we have everything from in our School of Access, the opportunity for adults to come back to us and get their high school diploma, they can come back through daytime classes, they can take online classes, and now we've also started offering an evening class as well, so that they can come in and finish those credits. Academic and Career Connections is a program offered to grade 12 students that need to have credits to be able to go into post-secondary education, and many of those students come back to take sciences and maths and go into health-related careers. We have a number of programs in our School of Health and Human Services, and I'm really pleased to tell you that two of those programs, the Mental Health Recovery and Promotion and the Aesthetics Program, we call those destination programs. We are the only campus with those programs in the province, so we often bring in students from right across the province that are coming to take those programs. We offer programs in our School of Business, School of IT and Creative Industries, as well as in our trades. We offer welding, carpentry, and automotive. But some of the other options, and this is something that a lot of people aren't aware of, we do a lot of work in continuing education. We do safety training, computer skills, and one of the things that I think this council will be most interested in, you'll remember a number of years ago, we used to offer a hospitality and tourism diploma. Unfortunately, across the college, that diploma was not well-received, because what was happening was people could walk into industry and basically make the same as what they were making coming out with a two-year diploma. So the college, we've been working really hard on that, and we hope to, as late as January of next year, offer a small certificate, we call it a micro-credential, in tourism and hospitality that students will be able to take through our ConEd. They'll be able to come in in the evenings or on a part-time basis and get some training in tourism hospitality, and it will sync up with tie-ins as well. So we are working right now with tie-ins, so we're really pleased about that, because we know that there's a need. We also offer apprenticeship programs through welding, carpentry, and right now I have electrical and automotive and carpentry going on. This offers those people that are working in apprenticeship trades in our area to stay in the area, come in and take their block training, not have to go to Halifax, pay the fees that it would cost them to live and walk away from home for a while. Automotive in particular, we offer in the evening, because the dealership simply can't release their folks during the day. So we've tried to make sure that that works. We also offer some custom learning as well, and one of the projects that we continue to work very closely with is web.com. As you'll remember, when web first came to the area late 2000, 2001, we helped to incubate them and trained the first 160 people that they hired. We've been working with them now over the last year and a half through a project called One Journey with Labor and Advanced Education, to help do some entry-level training as And that's an area, as a council, if you know that new industries are coming in, or you have employers that are saying, you know what, we need to upskill, or we need to provide some trained employees, please let us be your partner, and let us know what you need, and we can design training for that. One of the little-known facts, and I think that this speaks to how the college has grown over the last 15 years, we have a lot of articulation agreements now with colleges and universities, and this is just some of them. Our IT program, students can get credit with NASCAD, as well as with Dalhousie. Dalhousie also gives credit to a program that I offer out of Shelburne campus, which is a diploma in fisheries and aquaculture. Students can take that diploma and go and complete their Small Business Management program at Dalhousie, which is a real bonus for us. Cape Breton University also now, Cape Breton University and St. Aveks are the first two universities in this province to recognize students coming out of the Practical Nursing Program. And as long as they meet the requirements for nursing, they will give them credit for the two years they've done in Practical Nursing and to bridge to an RN program, which is really exciting. Some of the things that we provide, everything from student records to personal and professional career counseling. Our students can access academic supports and tutoring, and we provide a variety of accessibility services. All students in our campus and our college have access to what's called Premier Tools, which is accessibility software, that they can actually have their documents read to them, a lot of supports with keyboarding and that. So it's a great opportunity. Our goal is to try to not just make our campuses and services accessible, but make them open to everyone. Some international learning opportunities. We've been very, very lucky over the last number of years. We've had some students that have gone to a variety of international opportunities. I've had faculty go, we have projects right now in Kenya and Tanzania, and I was lucky enough last May to go to Tanzania as a part of a teaching group and work with a vocational training school in Tanzania and help them develop their customized training. So it's great opportunities both for our students and our staff. So you can visit us. Our open house this year, and I will be sending out formal invitations, is October the 18th, and it's an all-day event. But people can come at any time if they want to do a campus tour. We also, last Thursday night, hosted an information night, and we had over 50 people attend looking at programming for the upcoming year. 91% of employed NSCC grads live and work in Nova Scotia. I think that this is a huge piece for us. More and more and more, we're seeing our students want to stay in our local areas. In some programs, for example, in the Continuing Care Program, almost 98% of those students stay and live and work in the area that they train. But this is a huge importance to us, as we look to try to make sure that we have those new people staying and building our community. One of the things, and I'm really excited to show you this, part of our learning is not just in the classroom and going out into work placement. We also are involved in service learning. Last year, we hosted a program called Difference Dollars. Students could apply for dollars to be able to support a project that allowed them to demonstrate in the community how, what they've learned, and provide a service. Over the Digby and Yarmouth areas, we had six projects going. The project that you see here was done by one of our students, he's in our Social Services Program. He is an adult high school grad before he came into Social Service, worked with the Villa St. Joseph to develop a greenhouse for seniors. You'll see that it's accessible, it has raised beds, so people in wheelchairs can go in. He worked with our carpentry students, he designed it, our carpentry students built it, and worked with the staff at the villa, and it has been a huge success. In fact, so much so that we've had four other homes ask us if we could help them do that. But it's an opportunity for our students and our staff to give back. One of the things that you may not know, that every staff at NSCC has days that they can take donated to service learning. All my staff, if I want to take service learning days, I simply let my boss know what my proposal is and how I'm serving the community, and can do that. Two weeks ago, our mental health students served at the Hundred Meals. They prepared the meal and went and served and did the work for that day. So we really encourage that, because it's a way of giving back. We know that volunteerism is an extreme important part of our community, and yet many of us go to volunteer activities and know that we see the same faces. This is one of the ways that we try to instill with our students, the importance of not only giving it back, but really paying it forward. So one of the things that I wanted to talk to you today about is the Make Way campaign that we've undertaken. We know that post-secondary college is extremely important for our population. We know that those jobs that are out there require skills that many of our folks need to either upskill or come into education to be able to train for those careers. We also know that post-secondary education can be expensive, and many of the barriers that people face are not just paying tuition. About two years ago, the college under the NSCC Foundation undertook a provincial campaign with Rob Sovi as our chair, and the lofty goal was to raise $25 million. I can tell you right now that we're very close to that. Each campus was then asked to do a local campaign. And our Burridge and Digby site, our goal for our campaign is $350,000. We've been at this just, it's just about a year this March. I was asked to be the first college campus off the gate. All the money that we raise goes to our students in our area between Yarmouth and Digby. All funds raised go to the students. One of the unique things about the NSCC Foundation is that there is no administrative cost. The college underwrites the cost of that. Our public campaign was launched on 5th of October. So our focus is bursaries, innovative programming spaces, and urgent aid. Now, our bursaries are not based on grade point average, and that's one of the challenges. We know that there's a number of bursaries available to high school students when they graduate, coming into university or college, but most of those are based solely on academic standing. While academic standing is important, we also value community involvement, opportunities for people to be able to demonstrate work that they've done. So our bursaries are based on that, and they are also based on need. We're looking at innovative programming in spaces, because we know that our students need to have all those skills to be able to go out into the community. One of the areas that we're hoping with this campaign is to be able to increase our abilities around simulation equipment, and that simulation equipment could be things like in a nursing lab, where somebody goes in to do a physical assessment on a mannequin, and that condition can be changed by computers, so that that person learns how to adapt in that situation. For us, one of the areas that is critically important, and it's something that I spend much of my time, particularly this time of year, dealing with, is what we call urgent aid, and it's just that. As I told you, there's a lot of barriers for people coming to post-secondary education. Tuition may not be the biggest barrier. Being able to eat, be able to get yourself to school, and those things that come up, oftentimes, we have students that come in and something has happened in their life, or there's an unforeseen expense that they can't deal with, or simply that the money that they have just doesn't cover in order for them to be able to be successful. And what that means is if they can't, they often end up withdrawing, and it's a lost opportunity. The urgent aid program, and last year we gave out over $40,000 in my Digby-Yarmouth-Shelburn alone, in urgent aid, and that was for everything from gas cards, food cards, opportunities for people to be able to pay a power bill when that power bill couldn't be paid. I had a student two years ago come to me and say, "I'm going to have to leave my program because I can't afford to live." Originally, she had said, "How long can I leave my car in the parking lot?" And I thought, "Okay, car's broken down." When we probed a little bit, it turned out that she had run out of money by the end of March, and was going to try to, for the three weeks in April that she was still in class, she was going to try to live out of her car. We said no, and I was doing a presentation to a group, and one of the questions I was asked was what barriers people face, and this one was really fresh in my mind, and I mentioned it. I had three hotel operators call me and say, "If that ever happens again, let us know." So our community wraps their arms around it, and we're talking about money that might be $500 for people. And I, you know, there's so many stories. So for us, part of the work that we're doing. Now, where are we? Up till this date, we've raised 250 of our $350,000. 62% of my staff give to this campaign, whether it has been through events that we've hosted on campus or payroll deduction. We've been so blessed, and our community, Mike Trask, web.com, Doug Thistle, Wade Nickerson, to just name a few, have been huge donors. And they have come to us and supported us. And my reason for presenting to all the municipal units is so that, you know, because you will have constituents that will ask you about the college, and what are we doing, and particularly, why are we raising money? That's what it's for. It's for those opportunities for us to be able to support our students. $3,200 is what our tuition costs for most programming. It doesn't sound like a lot, but if you can't get a student loan, or if you can't afford to work part-time, you might be able to pay your tuition. But we know that student loan, even if you're lucky enough to be eligible, doesn't always cover all those expenses. Many of our students have small children, and many are single parents. So with our bursaries, we've been able to be very creative. We have some that are very specific to single parents, that they can apply. Mike Trask's bursaries have been based on need, and he wants to make sure that people are, work ethic is very strong to Mike. So he has asked us to make sure that when students apply for his bursaries, that they come with a letter of support from either a volunteer or an employer that can speak to that student's work ethic. We have one family who's actually, mental health is a huge issue in their family, and they have awarded a bursary to a second-year mental health student and covers all their tuition. So we've been very, very fortunate. Our campaign, we hope, wraps up in the summertime, but I can certainly keep you apprised of where we are. But we're very, very proud of what we've done so far, because we know that it benefits our students, and it provides us an opportunity to be able to educate people in our community to make sure that we can develop through economic development. And I'll leave you with this one. "My future's not determined, I am." This is a slogan of our Strive campaign, and so many of our students come in, and a lot of them face huge barriers. Many are financial, there are other barriers as well. But the determination, and if you've been to any of our graduations at the end of the year, you will see the pride on those students' faces, and you'll see the families. And we're so blessed to be able to offer it at the Mariners Center, because we don't have to give out tickets, everybody can come. And many of our students, when they walk across the stage, there's children and grandchildren cheering those students on. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak.
Is there a question? Go ahead, counselor question.
I just want to make one comment to you, Mary. I certainly appreciate your presentation, and I'm a past graduate of Nova Scotia Community College with the Business Management, and I found it very rewarding and very professional there. I went there when I was 57 years old and graduated at 59, and I was very proud of myself being able to do that at that late age. And, you know, it's a good program, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren. And I will tell you that Lauren was not our oldest graduate.
No. No. Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you, Mary. Excellent presentation. Just wanted to thank you for coming in and informing council about, in addition to your program, which is fantastic, all of the other things that your staff does in terms of getting the students to the graduation podium, so.
Thank you.
Many thanks, and there's lots more behind the scenes than most folks know, and this presentation is a good way of getting all that hard work, and certainly the support of the community, the work that they do out there in the public, so thank you.
On that note, Mary, just, well, I've got a couple of real quick questions. The Make Way campaign, is that a campaign that's being put out there? Are you going around to municipal units and to businesses and so on requesting?
What I've been doing, Leland, is to the municipal units, because we know that, you know, we're not coming to municipal units thinking that municipal units should be funding, that we want, it's more of a making sure that the municipal units know what we're doing. But we are, we work as a campaign team. I have an external and an internal team that we work with to develop prospects. Very lucky, as I said, to have Karen Churchill as my campaign chair. I have to tell you, starting this out, I was not a fundraiser, and it was like, oh, I was really concerned. I've learned so much, and basically, it's really talking to people, telling our story, and we've been very, very blessed with how we've been received in the community.
Okay. I guess then, what I'll do is I'll ask Liz to kind of put it on one of our committee of the whole meetings for a discussion for counselors, if they wish to participate in some way, or the municipality.
Thank you.
Might like to do that. And my last concern is, Mary, I know it's very important and so on, for the education of young people, and I know going through the school system and so on, there is a lot of young people. When I went to the school system, when I hit grade nine, a lot of my fellow students left and went into, I'll say, the family businesses and so on, because they couldn't get into the high school, they knew they wouldn't be able to do the high school. I believe still, Mary, there's a lot of students out there, but my understanding is you've got to have like a grade 12 in order to be able to, and I think there's a lot of students or a lot of people, young students, that are not meeting that criteria, and they're staying in a lower job, and so on, when in reality, they could become carpenters, electricians, but they just, they need some other guidance, I guess, Mary.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, Leland, it's a good point, and that's one of the reasons why we have the Adult Learning Program. It is a recognized Nova Scotia adult high school diploma.
Okay.
And many of those students coming back, they can come back to us part-time, they can come back to us full-time. With us, they're doing their credits, which would be considered Level III and IV, which is grades IX, X, XI, and XII.
Okay.
We also, in town, have the Yarmouth Learning Network, which would take somebody who's at a lower level and be able to work on those skills as well. We have a lot of people, in fact, the young gentleman who is in the picture with the greenhouse, that's exactly the predicament he found himself in. He had left school early. He had been working away, he has a daughter, came back, finished his high school, and is now, he will graduate this year with his two-year diploma in Social Services.
Okay.
But making that program also available evenings and online has been a huge piece, because not everybody can quit and go back to school. And so being able to take some of those credits, to be able to get themselves to a point of either being able to take some of the other full-time training programs that are post-secondary, or simply be able to increase their skills within their own employment, to be able to take advantage of other opportunities.
Okay. So I guess my last point, and maybe, and I guess I'll have to direct my question probably to Greg this time, is is this something that we could, I know on our websites now you can put different things, is this something that we could attach, or would it be recommended to attach on our website for further education, and it just automatically goes off to, because I know some people, some of us may not want to go to Nova Scotia, but is there another way? Is this something we could?
Well, I'm sure we could connect them as, you know, there's partner sections on websites, there's link sites to connect to partners and associates and colleagues and other, you know, other organizations. I'm sure that's fairly easy to do from a technical level, yeah.
Okay. I'll mention it to our techs as well, Greg, and maybe you and I can chat about that. That would be great.
Put you in touch with our tech, yeah.
Okay. Mary, again, thank you very much. Appreciate all the work.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Craig and Carolyn, if you wish to come down, our next presentation is 4.3, Yarmouth Dog Park Association, Craig Crocker and Carolyn Robertson. Your mic's on.
Perfect. Good morning. So Craig and I are here representing the Yarmouth Dog Park Committee, and I'm going to give you a little bit of background about the dog park that we've been working on, and this has been in the works for a year and a half now? Yes. So we, as a committee, are a volunteer group of dog lovers. We got together and felt that there was a real need within the community to be able to go somewhere safe, that we can socialize our dogs and socialize ourselves. So the town of Yarmouth was approached in 2016, and they were asked by just a community member if it was possible to acquire a piece of land owned by the town to start working towards the goal of creating a really nice space for our area. At that time, the town of Yarmouth decided to survey residents and find out if there was interest in a dog park, if it was something that was wanted. They also surveyed residents who lived adjacent to the piece of land they were looking at giving away to the dog park, to make sure that they were comfortable with the idea. What was found in that survey was that 48% of the responses that were received were from residents who lived in an adjacent municipality. So we found that people who live in the municipality of Argyle, as well as the municipality of Yarmouth, were very interested in this concept, in a place where they could gather and walk and enjoy a space with their dogs. 50% 50% of the people who were surveyed felt that they would use a dog park a great deal to a moderate amount. 70% were strongly in favor of a dog park. And we received something like 450 responses to the survey. So this wasn't a small survey. We actually did get a lot of pickup and so there's value placed on these responses. What was asked for at the time was that they're looking for, we were looking for a shared community space, which was led by volunteer efforts. So the idea was that it was going to be really grassroots. We'd get the piece of land, we would look for donations from the community. We would maybe hold a couple of community events where the community could come out and build trails. There was a concept there to have a natural play space for kids. Like just a really nice grassroots park was the idea. The town of Yarmouth, after the survey came in and they found that there was interest, they did decide to give the dog park committee a piece of land for a dog park. They are still in ownership of the land. They're going to maintain it and own it, but it will be intended for a dog park. And the committee will run the concept within, yes, within the town's rules. What they did at that time was the town of Yarmouth actually decided we needed a full design for this park. And they hired a consultant, Upland, to put together a concept, which is included in the package I gave you. It's on the last page. So they came up with the Wow Dog Park, far exceeding what was the original ask. And personal opinion, very cool. Would definitely service this area more than just the town of Yarmouth. I think a greater area. I think you'd probably catch tourists coming off the boat who wanted to stop with their dogs. It would definitely be a very interesting community space. That being said, it comes with a massive price tag, which no one actually committed to paying for. So as a committee, we are working towards trying to generate funds. And we've done a lot of community efforts to generate some income. People can donate to the dog park on the town of Yarmouth website. But right now, even though that Upland design was designed with some volunteer concepts in place, it was phased in implementation. At this point in time, it is just completely outside of our scope as a committee to be able to implement that park. So we're going to all of the councils to see kind of what the appetite is here. Do you want this large park that the town had designed? Or is a scaled-down version an option? Do you even want a dog park for your residents to be able to use? What we're asking today is that you consider a cost-sharing partnership with the three municipalities. I know you have your joint council meetings and it might be a good idea to sit down and have a conversation together as three councils if this is, if this is something that you think will really benefit the community. Our scaled-down phased version that we've done still allows for the Upland version to happen in the future if there's uptake, but this would just get us started in the spring. So what we're looking for, the total cost is $60,000. If you look at page two, this is the design concept. The town has put in for the land. They've done a lot of the grading on the site and the clearing of vegetation. And they've also put in some stormwater management infrastructure. But now to finish off the park, we're looking at putting in fencing all around, having a large and small dog park area, putting in a car park, and then hopefully some trails networks that we could do, hopefully through some volunteer efforts. So we're asking for complete cost share, a fourth of the park, $15,000 each. And we as a committee have raised $15,000 that we would be putting towards that effort. We're at $12,000 right now in our bank account, but our intent is to have the other three. I've also included cost estimates for like, for the next phase and based on that Upland plan. So that's in the other pages. But right now, it's just, that's outside of our reach and we're looking at just trying to get the park available in the spring. So with that, unless Craig has anything else to add. Oh, we also just wanted to make sure that there's an understanding that right now the town holds all the money for this project. They have an account for us as a charity project. So any construction with the park, they hold the money and they go to tender and they'll hire people to the proper, the proper group to implement the project. So we're actually pretty hands-off on that part. The town is doing it. Is that clear? Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from council? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thanks for the presentation. It's certainly an important piece of infrastructure, I believe. Where is the park going to be physically located?
So it's on Jarvis Road right now in the town of Yarmouth. And the idea is that it will be part of a larger park trail system and connect into Broadbrook. And eventually that'll be expanded and connect into what the town's doing with the Pleasant Street Trail. And hopefully more trails connecting throughout the other, the south end of town.
It's just off Argyle Street.
Just off, yeah.
Yes, Argyle and Southeast.
So it's good information for council to have. And I mean, I'm going to recommend that we do add this to our joint council meeting so we can get a feel for what the other councils are thinking about the concept and the move forward. So thank you and we'll take it under fullest consideration.
Thank you. I should highlight, we did present to the town of Yarmouth and they made a motion that they would like to send a letter to the adjacent municipalities stating that they would commit the funds if the adjacent municipalities did. So I don't know if that letter was sent out, but that's kind of where their thinking is at the moment.
As it stands right now, it's on our joint council meeting. It's in there.
Something else I want to add, I'm pretty sure on the application it shows, our bank account only shows, I think it's $2,300 and change. That's money that us as the committee have raised ourselves. And on top of that, the town, through our fundraisers, through personal donations and us selling signs, if you will, for the product, there's an additional $12,000. So it's $12,000 plus $2,300, so approximately $14,000 as of now. I just also want to know, that $2,300 for the signs that we are selling, or trying to sell to everybody is.
Craig, if you want to hold them up and face the camera there, other people will get up.
So the idea behind these is that we are offering sponsorships to companies if they'd like to purchase a section of the fencing that we require. Fencing's very expensive and it's pretty crucial for an off-leash dog park. So these are the sponsorship options at the moment to get the signage. And the signage would be on the fence but facing into the park. So the dog park users would see who supplied which sections of fence.
And the costs of the signs are $36,000, pretty easy. And what I was getting at, this $2,300 that we have in our account, when somebody wants a sign, when they want to donate the 300, 600, or 900, they are going to get a sign constructed and put on the park. But we as the committee have to make the sign ourselves. So this $2,300 will go towards making the signs. And the cost of the signs, we're looking for 140 sections of fence at approximately $300 a section to construct the whole park. So if you do the math, for us to pay for the signs, we need to have $2,800 just in our account just to pay for the signage. And we are prepared to do more fundraising, which we're going to. We haven't got anything in mind as of right now, but it's been winter and it hasn't been a real good winter. And we're just waiting for spring. We were supposed to have a meeting last night, actually, and that got canceled. So we're prepared to start working on the fundraising like ASAP again.
Counselor Christian, you have a question?
Yes, your theory is very good. But I'm an owner of a small little dog that I like to take walks quite often. If I go to the dog park, how, my little dog is very friendly, very approachable and whatnot. If I take him to the small dog park, is there always going to be, what control do we have of dogs running around? Maybe some other dogs are not quite friendly enough and might attack my little dog. He'd be scared to death.
So a lot of dog parks operate under the assumption that the owners know their dogs and know whether they should be there or not and behave in appropriate manner. There will be, on the final page, there's some signage associated with the park that's been designed. So those signs talk about the rules of the park and it's important that people follow them. We as a committee would, will be users of the park. Obviously, that's why we have this interest and want to be on the committee. So as users, I think the intent is that we will self-police a little bit. And if people are not behaving appropriately in the park or their dogs are not a good fit for the park, then we'll just have a conversation. It's a small town, small area. We don't have to be, I hope we don't have to be placing tickets on people and that we can regulate it kind of amongst ourselves.
I can understand that you can assume that everybody will follow those rules, but the human factor is going to be weighed in there with the unknown factor, right? So that would be my main concern right there about taking my little dog to a park.
Yeah, so I mean, if it became an issue, the town does have an off-leash dog bylaw, which I assume could be amended to include some rules on a dog park. And then it could be enforced by the bylaw enforcement officer if that was a concern. But honestly, until we know that the park's going to happen, it hasn't been a huge priority at this point in time.
But if he's hurt or severely hurt or even the ladder, right?
Yeah.
It's kind of late then, right? So that's only my concern.
Yeah, I totally agree. And this piece of land, it's very large. I think it's almost five acres.
Yeah, I know where it is.
So the idea is that you'd have your small and your large dog totally fenced in areas. And then there'd be walking trails throughout and areas where dogs can play. So it'd be quite large. Like it's not like a whole bunch of dogs in one small area. You could move around with your dogs and it wouldn't be. Because I think a lot of the issues with dogs temperament come from when they're in an enclosed space and there's some dominance happening because it's a smaller, smaller area. So I would hope that the size is reasonable to discourage that kind of behavior.
The small park alone is 250 feet long and 100 feet wide, 150 feet wide. So 100 feet wide, I'm sorry. So it's a fairly large area. And we plan on one day having trees and shrubs and what have you. We're going to also have playthings in there like tractor tires and not a culvert, but the same thing, something they can get in out of the heat or whatever. It will be a safe park.
Something else that Craig just reminded me of, about a year and a half ago, I believe it was Clean Foundation, they were looking at planting 150 trees for free within the town. And they had committed to that. This project's taken a little bit longer to get going, but I assume if we have those conversations again, like there might be some opportunities for cost sharing there to make sure that we get. They make it a pretty nice place and also have some donations happening.
Yeah, we're not looking for just a fenced-in ball field. We're looking for something that's going to be attractive for users and for just people passing by.
And as I mentioned, there is some, like, because it's looking at being connected into the larger park system within the town, there is still a plan in the future for more parking space, for larger, for playground space and that kind of thing so that it can be a space that all families want to enjoy, maybe not just people who have dogs.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And first and foremost, I'm going to ask some pointed questions. And if you feel offended or, Mr. Chair, if you find that they're out of line, please correct me. I have to make a few clarifications first before I ask these questions. First of all, in your application, you have that you're a registered society vet since April 2017. Is that correct? So you are your own organization? So I'm going to ask this question. You have a lot of help and you have, you had mentioned to us that there's been a study put forward and plans put forward by the town. So I want to know, is this your project or is this the town of Yarmouth's project?
We're going to be like, I guess, we talked about that before. We're going to be the facilitator, if you will, for the town of Yarmouth. The town will be calling the shots. They will, if fencing, for example, if we want galvanized hokes with black coat fencing, the town is going to say yes or no. They may want all galvanized fencing.
So there's some benefits to that for, from our perspective. The first is we are dog owners, not park planners. So the town knows what it's like to go out to tender and hire. They also have standards for the parks in the town. And they have park staff who do the maintenance. So that is why we have this arrangement, is that the intent is that this would be held to the same standard that any other park in the town would be and to ensure that things are done appropriately, really. Yeah, and to take some of the burden off of us as volunteers. Because honestly, just the fundraising efforts and coordinating volunteer events and that kind of thing is a lot of work.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know that volunteers are a lot of work. I'm with a volunteer firefighter, you have a volunteer fireman behind you. And volunteering certainly is a lot of work. I remember that your group came to our council and asking about this program originally. And we had looked for different areas around our area. I believe one area that was thrown out there was out in the, by the animal hospital down in Arcadia, if I remember correctly. And you guys, at the time, were planning to do all your work. But what I see here is, please forgive me because I know this is going to come out wrong. What I see is a not-for-profit society group that's been taken over by a government organization, in my opinion. I think that's wrong. I don't feel that what you guys want is actually what you're going to be getting. Yeah, it's great to have these beautiful fences and stuff like that, but my God, this is, in my opinion, and it's no fault of your own. The town has put forward these plannings and stuff, they perform studies and stuff, but I don't think that's where your original plan was to be, from my understanding, from your first presentation with council. And yes, this is on the joint council meeting. And this is actually one of the things that I earmarked because I, it's on, I can't remember what exactly the agenda item is, but I was going to bring those exact same concerns that I'm bringing forward to you, to them. I'm getting tired of government organizations pushing around not-for-profit societies and volunteers to go at their will. From my opinion, it should be, you guys have an idea, you bring it forward to council and we try to help you in any way that we can. I don't, the way that I see it, this is turning the other way around. We have a government organization that's telling you guys what they want to see in their full plan. And I personally, I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm for this project. I will be using this dog park because I have a two cocker spaniel and I have one that's a rescue dog that needs to have socialization. I'm full support of this project, but the way that this is turning, I'm not in favor of at all. And that's my opinion, that's not necessarily the opinion of my other counselors sitting around the table. I might be totally out of line, but I will say that.
A couple of clarity notes. The first is, the first committee that came and presented, there was another group that was trying to get together a dog park for this region. It's not us, we're a new committee that formed.
So is that other committee still?
No, they were looking for something different. And I think they were looking for the idea of a ball field, honestly. Anything with a fenced-in area. I think that was the same group that was using the old ball field on Kemp Street. That's not, from my research in dog parks, what we're looking for at all. It's actually kind of dangerous and we're looking for a little bit more than that. When it comes to the town, the town has actually been pretty hands-off on this project. We almost wish they would do more. They kind of said, like, this started with a request from a resident who came and just said, hey, look, there's this piece of land, I know you own it. There's some real potential there and I think it would be good for the community if we worked towards it. And there's something that volunteers could do and, and let's just see what can happen out of this." The thing that happened is that the community got really excited about it. Like, really excited from just that letter and this piece of land. And so, that's when, when town council decided that they would fund the design proposal for, for the park. And from that, once again, there was no commitment made because it was all supposed to be volunteer and grassroots built. So, this is dreaming a little bit, but what I do wanna say is, sometimes we settle in this area for something that is just good enough. And this park is cool. Like, it is really awesome. And I think you could draw people from all over the province to see this park. And yes, it got really big. And it's not what was originally intended, but it was, it was a good idea. And I think that's why it's gotten big and it's gotten the attraction that it has. So, I, I think that it definitely warrants having the conversation with the three councils because it, it would benefit all the, all three areas and it would benefit the residents. And we've, it's been proven through the survey and through talking to the community. But Town of Yarmouth has not really committed anything, except for that they funded the surveys and that, the survey and that they know that the community is interested. And they've provided the land, which is, is kinda sitting there waiting for a decision to be made about what that design's gonna be.
Please, please forgive me if I offend you. I made, I, I-
Oh, I'm not offended at all, no.
But I, I, I have this issue that, that, that's on the, the agenda. And there's a couple others that fall along the same points of thought. And I'm very sure that the media is here today, they're gonna be reporting this. And I'm gonna be holding my guns on this because I, I'll just leave it at that because I don't wanna get out of turn here. But thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate your answers and we'll see what happens from there.
Okay. And we, we did request that the Town of Yarmouth own the land and that they, that they do all of the tender processing and hold the bank account, just because we, as a committee, were not able to do that. Or, well, we are able, but it would be a lot extra work for us. So, that's why we made that request to, to the town. They didn't offer that to us, we asked, and it's a service that they could provide.
If, if, if we were the landowners, the association or committee, if you will, we would be responsible for liability as well. And we certainly don't have funds enough to go out and, to, to warrant a $2 million liability insurance or anything like that. I just wanted also to note that this property is a large piece of property. I'm gonna use feet. It's six hundred and twenty-seven feet across the road or road frontage. It's four hundred and twenty-five feet deep and like five hundred feet across the back. It's a large area. What we wanna get started on is an area two fifty by two fifty. But we wanna make it safe and secure for our pets and ourselves.
Counselor Cunningham, go ahead.
Well, I, I've been on council for, for a good long time now, approaching ten years. And initially, if, if folks sort of said, you know, how, how big an issue is, or, you know, sort of animal, animal control, animal welfare, which is sort of encompassed in this, I'd initially said, well, I, I don't think it's, it's that big an issue for, for municipalities. But I can tell you, over the ten years, my thinking's evolved quite a bit around that and it is a big issue. What I like about, I, I do like conceptually what you put forward here with the, with the town owning it. And I think you've articulated pretty well the, the reasons why that makes sense. And I agree, I think that makes sense, that, that they would own the property. And the whole standards piece, I know it's a little bit more money, but anything worth doing is worth doing right. I think that's the, I think that's the, the conventional wisdom. And, and I, 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 I agree with doing it right. And, and if the town's gonna own the property, give the property and sort of oversee the property in, in terms of their bylaws, in terms of maintenance, those types of things, I think that makes perfect sense. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm pretty supportive, generally speaking, of the, of the, of the, of the pitch. I think it was useful for the town to have, had the foresight to, to, to commit to doing the survey. I, I think that provides information for me, as a councillor of the municipality of Yarmouth, and I'm just one of seven. But having said that, if you look, seventy percent of residents were, and were, were strongly in favor of the park. So, for me as a councillor, that tells me that, that, you know, this is important in people's minds. So, if it's important for, for people, obviously, it, it, it should cause me to, to consider it very, very carefully. So, that, that's what I'm gonna do. And I understand it's gonna be on the, the, the regional council agenda. So, seems like a good idea to me. And, and again, deciding to put the funds and, and support of that, so, another, another question to be answered. But I'm, I'm, I'm pretty optimistic of the whole project. Looks good conceptually. And I know with animals, it, it's gotta be done right. I, I mean, you, you've got the picture here, which may, which is really good in terms of small dog area, all dog area. So, seems like it, anything, you know, doing it right to keep them, keep, keep the dogs, you know, reasonably separated and so forth, makes sense. So, good presentation, thank you so much, and we'll be considering moving forward.
I do wanna just highlight, I gave a package to Greg when I came in that has all of the public participation that was done by the town, which also included a number of, of public meetings, which were extremely well-attended. There was, I think, fifty people who came to the one, just to talk about wanting a dog park and trying to find the most appropriate location. Just, that information's available to you as well.
Counselor Durkey?
Thank you, Caroline and Craig. I'm finding this fascinating. Impartial reason for that is because I think in today's society, a lot of younger people are choosing to have pets instead of choosing to have children. So, it's a way certainly for, to bring, bring people together to socialize as well. What I'd like to know is, the upland design, the higher end, phase one. So, we can do phase zero and still have a sufficient space for, for a dog park? And, and phase one is the, would be the second component? So, it actually would have already, once phase zero is done, it's totally accessible? And what I'm wondering, are there other dog parks in Nova Scotia that have, that are anything similar to this? Or what research has been done to look at other areas?
On page two, that, that picture came from the Bridgewater Dog Park.
Okay.
And they have a bunch of trails incorporated for their dog park. And Adelaide and Eate, where this park is just east of, of the Broadrook Trail. And someday, we hope to incorporate the trails into the park. But again, that's, that's outside of our reach, that would be the town doing that. But that's the only park that, that I have seen. And we took, my wife and I went and visited, took numerous pictures of it. A basic park, right? They did theirs in a wooded area. So, they cut down trees, instead of planting them, they cut down trees to make it more open. So, they've got shade and everything. One thing I do wanna note, their park is, is, the floor of the park is made, is grass, is sodded. It's messy. You can't go there, like, today, you wouldn't be able to go there today and bring home a clean dog. Our, the park that we wanna construct is gonna be, the whole floor is gonna be constructed of pea gravel and crusher dust. It might be a little sandy on your dog, certainly won't be muddy.
Cheaper to maintain as well.
And, and, and almost zero maintenance as well.
Um, just a comment that, you know, we are trying to really build up Yarmouth County as a destination. And if we have something like this available, it would be really attractive for people coming from away to bring their dogs, knowing that we have a place for them to socialize. Thank you.
Yeah, and all our hotels are dog-friendly.
That's, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Plus people coming in from Metagen, Shawneeville, Berne, whatever, they're gonna stop, they're gonna have coffee or sandwich. It's quick for the pet as well.
Yeah, so the, upland did look at other dog parks to this scale and size. We are very fortunate that we have so much land in this area because most places that want dog parks, they don't have the land available to do something of this, this size and scope. We did talk to the Dog Park Association in Lunenburg and got their feedback on rules and that kinda thing. I've also, HRM has a number of large public wooded parks that are off-leash-friendly dog spaces. So, this idea is, it's very, it's, it's a large scope, but it's kind of combining what's good about each of the little ones that we have in Nova Scotia and trying to put them all together and make something even better.
Did you still have a question? Craig, you have a question?
Yes, I do, if we could. I know we're pushing on time, but I just want a little bit more clarity on an operational item. And I think you've touched on it, Caroline, with your conversation so far this morning. But I wanna be clear in my own mind about the intentions and the responsibility divisions and around future upkeep, future repairs and maintenance, future custodial duties. So, am I understanding that it's, I know the town has not committed yet, but the tension would be for the town to take this on under their Parks and Rec Department budget? Okay, thanks.
Senator?
That's it, thanks.
I only have a, a couple of real quick questions. I, I see there's a phase zero, phase one, phase three and so on. Is the Yarmouth Dog Park just phase zero? Is that all, I mean, I'm not saying that there won't be something later on because when I flip over to phase one, it total cost a hundred and ten thousand dollars. But on that same said page, phase one, a hundred and ninety-two-five, phase two, eighty, phase three, one fifty, and phase four, forty-seven thousand. Is that like gonna be the total over a period of years? Or is phase zero basically it with some improvements down the road?
Phase zero is something we came up with out of the upland report. So, they have their four phases. It's very expensive. There's a lot of features and elements that cater to a number of people in the community, not just those who would like to use a dog park. So, our, our thought with the phase zero is that we would implement just what we need to make it a good dog park. And then as it attracts people, then we would keep adding elements. Maybe we can apply for grants for the natural play park or maybe, you know, that kinda thing. As it, as it becomes a popular destination, we could improve on it and follow this upland concept.
Okay, now, that, well, I, that, when I was looking at your, the four pages, I was wondering what, trying to make an understanding. But okay, it's basically phase zero.
That's where our mind is. You've got all the information. If you wanna do all four phases-
No, 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 no. I was just trying to, because I was looking at some of the, the diagrams and I'm thinking, well, that isn't what phase zero looks like and phase four looks like and so on.
Yeah, so, it's, it's kinda something separate, but we wanna be able to build towards what upland has done. So, just so you have all the information and know the, the concept and the plan that's in place.
Okay, okay. There, seeing there's no further questions, I'm, go ahead.
One more thing, the, the way that we, the reason why we designed or drew up the park the way it is now was to save on fencing. That way, the center fence is a common shared fence, whereas the other ones, the, the large dog park has its own enclosure and, and the small had its own enclosure. We figured by putting the two together, we'd save on fencing and cut down on costs. And one other thing, the, they, they wanted a bridge between the first parking lot and the second, an arts bridge. It was only twenty-two thousand dollars for that bridge. That's why we figured we should start somewhere else. And then if we, if we work up to that, fine.
Okay, that's great. Okay, our, from my understanding, our joint council meeting is on the twentieth. And it's at, I think, four o'clock, I think. Yes, it starts at four-thirty. So, that's our joint council meeting, where I know it's on, on the joint council meeting. Our council is not making no commitment at this point and so on. Wait until after that meeting and we are gonna be doing some budgetary discussions here in the very near future. So, it'll be part of that discussion. So, if you're looking for an answer today, you're not gonna get it and so on, without respect. I'll be honest with you. Again, thank you very much for your presentation. You've given us some information. And we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Deputy Warden? I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, deputy.
Is there a way to incorporate what you have created, the phase zero, into the larger project once more money is available?
Yes, yeah, we think so. It's, it's only slightly different, it still has the concept, so. I, if, if it would help, we could do a larger design with the phases of what it would look like based on phase zero, but we were just hoping to get phase zero, so that's why.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item number four, employment service center. It's Carla LeBlanc, in Dolores, I believe. Come down, take a seat. Your microphone is on. All right, the floor is yours. We have you scheduled, Bill. Time is up, actually, according to our saying so.
Okay, well, we won't take a lot of your time, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, my name is Carla LeBlanc and I work for Nova Scotia Works. And this is Dolores, and she is with Wide Reach. So, today we're here to just give you some information about our upcoming job fair. So, this is our second annual job fair that we will be hosting. And the date is a week, we are a week out today, so March twenty-first. It's at Burridge and it's from three till seven. So, we just wanted to sort of just give you a little bit of idea of what it's all about. So, the goal of our job fair is we really wanna facilitate the hiring needs of local companies and the employment needs of the local job seekers. We really wanna stimulate and promote the local economic and employment climb. So, that's what our, our goals are. And some of our objectives that we have written out is, within thirty days of the job fair, we are hoping for twenty immediate vacancies to be filled due to the job fair networking. Some of, so, and also too, within ninety days of the job fair, we want to see, we just wanna see that continuing, continuing interviewing conducted by the employers with candidates from the job fair. And we're hoping maybe within a year or so, we are gonna see some, you know, harder vacancies filled do some, due to some of the networking from our job fair. So, the scope of our job fair is that we want, we have, which we're very excited about, is we've secured thirty-plus local employers that will be attending, who do have immediate vacancies. And we also have five supportive educational institutions that will be joining us as well. So, some of the sectors that we've targeted are construction, retail, food, transportation, digital media, recreation, and boat building. So, those are just a few. We've also drawn job seekers within a one-hour radius. So, we've really extended our advertisement out, so as far as Shelburne and as far as Dickby. So, we're hoping for some people to come in. And we really want, we, we've provided our job seekers with some orientation sessions before our job fair. So, those orientation sessions, the purpose of those is that we really want to prepare our job seekers for the day of. So, some of the orientation sessions that we've put on are resume and interview skills. We've done a social media one, sort of how to act on social media because we understand today that's sort of in, very important. A lot of employers do check social media. And we also are doing like how to, how to meet and greet employers. And we really want to just really ensure that those job seekers have some really good resumes. We want them to be able to formulate five or six different questions that they can ask the employers as they're, they're communicating with them at the booth. So, we were, we've really prepared them to, to do that. So, just a, a little bit about what it, what's in it for the employer is, the great thing is, it's free to the employer to come, as well as the job seekers, of course. We really wanna find matches and lead some of those hard, help lead some of those harder-to-fill positions. Also too, we have like, and at Burridge, it's just in, in the gym, we have like what's called, we called it the hub. So, it's in the center of the gym where employers, job seekers could go and do some one-on-one interview if they choose to. The job seeker can go in and speak with our career practitioners if they need their resumes updated. We can print extra copies there for them. We have it all set up, we will. So, yeah, so it's, and, and what we do for the employer during that day is we will provide them a free supper during supper time because it is three till seven. So, they won't feel the need that they have to leave their booth. And complimentary, like water, tea, coffee, will be there for them. So, we're, we're very excited about that. And I'm gonna pass it over to Dolores. She'll talk a little bit about the benefits of the job fair.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dolores Atwood. I, I can't believe I'm a little bit nervous, you know, looking at the people I already know. Anyway, I'm gonna talk about the benefit of this job fair and why the Wide Reach participated- Anyway, I'm going to talk about the benefit of this job fair, and why the Wide Reach participated in it. And one thing about the job fair, it helps people who are seeking for a job to get to know our community, and, you know, look for jobs that are available in the community, as well as the services that are available, there are lots of services available in our communities. I work with newcomers, and I know that. I get to know about the services through my, through my work with newcomers, and most of our local people don't know about these resources and where to find them. So, this job fair helped us to, to see that, to navigate the, the employees and people who are looking for a job through the system as well, and what is available. And also, it helps businesses to, business owners, which are, well, employers, to showcase what they have available in, in the community. And there are some employers who have positions, but they don't, they cannot find the qualified people to get the job. And sometimes they have to, have to hire somebody from another, you know, town or province, but the thing is that we have people who are qualified here, but do not know about this job position. So, this helped, this job fair also helped them to know that. Also, it helps employee to understand what is available, like, people who are looking for a job, and also students who will learn about what is required in the future, like they know what employers want, they come there, like the student from the community college, they come there to see what is available in the community, so that in the future, when they are looking for jobs, they know where to get them. Again, then, it helps the employer, employees, students to know resources that are available. I have three clients who are re-professioners, one of them was, I mean, with a, with a master degree, and she was looking for, she was saying to me, I have six months to live this community, if I can find anything. And through the job fair last year, she was able to find something. So, I have three clients who got two position of supervisor, and the other one got a teaching cla, teaching a job with a French school, teaching grade five. So, for me, I, I think that was a plus, and now we can able to keep this family here in our community, and they are volunteering as well. So, I think this, this job fair is something that we need to really support to boost, to help keep people in our community. Thank you.
Go ahead, Patty.
Thank you very much. Thanks, ladies. I attended the job fair last year and was really impressed. What I'm wondering is, do you have statistics from last year's job fair to say how many people were placed, or how many jobs were filled?
So, last year they had 15 immediate vacancies that were filled within a 30-day period, and we had over 300 job seekers that attended the event, and it was within a 45-degree distance, so like Barrington to like Waymouth. So, we're hoping to extend that a bit more this year, and we're anticipating 400 job seekers to come through the door, and hoping for some of like, so last year was 15 immediate vacancies, and then we're hoping for at least 20 or more immediate vacancies.
Immediate, right, but do we know if a lot of those 300 fam jobs are?
From my final report, and I don't know right off the top of my head, this is, because I wasn't there last year unfortunately, and I did not complete the final report, so I don't, I don't know right off the top of my head, sorry.
That's okay, that's, that's fine.
But I know for sure that we filled for sure 15 immediate ones, and then there was a few, like within a year's time, there was like, I think, three maybe harder vacancies, but I mean, with 315, it's, yeah, there was more, definitely.
Thank you.
We know that for sure.
All right, I believe Counselor Cushing was next, yep, correct.
Yes, thank you ladies for your presentation, and I do have attended your, your job fairs before, and they're well-attended, and even if you pick up, are able to find two or three jobs for people, it's, it's a plus. So, your efforts are, are certainly not wasted, are certainly valuable, and, and I certainly give you all the, all the best wishes and for it to continue on, and, and again, like I say, I've been there before, as Patty had, but she answered some, she asked some of the questions, I was going, so I'm not going to repeat myself, so.
And what's really nice, thank you, and what's really nice is that we had reached out to all the employers that had attended last year, and I want to say 75% of them have agreed to come back, so they've all felt it was a very good success, and that a lot of them stated that they had found some good qualified job seekers that came out of that networking event. So, we're hoping, of course, for more, and we're really excited, it's our second annual one, and hopefully we can continue this year after year.
The three people that I mentioned were immigrants, so I could imagine the local people who have really received something from that, so I think that's a good thing, yeah, yeah.
So, you're all welcome to come again this year.
Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you for the presentation, very well done, and I, I popped in my calendar to, to drop by, so certainly that, and, and I was astounded by the, the number of positions that were filled because of the, the job fair, that's pretty impressive, if you were able to fill 15 or 20 vacancies immediately, that's a real help, and those, those, filling those vacancies, obviously, they're, they're tax-paying folks, and, and help support the municipality and help make the, you know, the machinery of, of the economy in this area go around, so, just, just a question, so, there were obviously not all the jobs that were available were filled, is there any eye to, and we have lots of, obviously, folks that, but there are some positions that are hard to fill from within, are, is there any follow-up that's done in terms of looking outside of the area, or is that not sort of the purpose of the, of the job fair? So, I mean, if you're talking Barrington to, to Waymouth, if there was something that, are there invites from further away? I know you talked a little bit about doing that, and, and I know there are limits to what you can do, but maybe just comment a little on that, on that issue.
Sure, so invites as in employers, is that what I'm hearing you asking? So, we've, so.
Saying something particularly hard to fill, is that very much still a level or something like that, is, is that something that you can prioritize on the valley or whatever you're doing?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, with Nova Scotia Works, our whole mandate is to, to assist job seekers and employers as well to find employment, because we're working with all unemployed. And so, my role as the employer engagement specialist, we have them straight across province, so we're often communicating with each other, if there's positions, say in Halifax, and if we do have job seekers that are willing to relocate, then we would send them that way. I hope that's what you're, you're asking. But as for the job fair itself, we have reached out to, we have like AFteria will be there, we have Sobies in Shelburne and in Barrington, so we do have a few employers, we have Riverside, Camo Seafood, we have a few that are outside of Yarmouth that are attending as well, so we're, we're hoping to hear more statistics on some of those harder positions that some of those companies have to fill that we can bring forward for the, for next year, for sure.
All right, Warden Anthony, you need a position to ask some questions.
Very much, I appreciate that. A couple of my questions have already been answered, but I guess my, my one question is, what is the cost to an employer, and I want to know who pays, because you've mentioned that there's a supper or whatever for the, for the employers or whatever, so.
We have committees that we form committee, and we get funding from, from different groups, like for example, registered.com and another group of people, so we get money from these people, probably the municipality too.
Yes.
So, we get funding from these people, and that's what the money we use.
And it's a free session?
And it's a free session, actually.
It's free, is that the job secret fair? It's free for employers.
So, where do you advertise for, I'm an unemployed person at home in, in Waymouth, how, how do I know about this? Where do you advertise?
We advertise through CJLS, Facebook, and all through any media we can, yeah.
So, like on the Claire shopper?
Yeah, Claire shopper. We've advertised the Vanguard, I've done an interview with the Vanguard, we've done interviews on CJLS, we have job ads running as we speak on CJLS, we have a gentleman in our office who's bilingual, he will be doing an interview with FIFA. We have reached, we have hand-delivered our posters to local, like community, like community partners in our area, and all of our employers have been really gracious to advertise on all of their social media sites, and put posters up in their location, we've been trying to spread the word.
Okay, well, no, it's, I, I just wanted to know as a, so, I can't come back and say, well, I didn't know about it, it's out there, okay? And I guess my, one, one last comment is, you said you had 300 attendees last year, hoping for 400 this year, and the question was asked, like, how many, did you have stats on how many people are employed? Well, I guess, I'm, I'm more concerned with, they're given the opportunity, they get to meet employers, and then it's totally up to them whether they accept a job or whatever, or there's, but it puts them out there, and the employer knows that there is people available, and they can either have resumes or names, so it's a good thing that way, so.
Absolutely, and so we really feel too, with the orientation sessions that we have opened up to all of our job seekers, that will really help them prepare for, you know, some of those open dialogue, you know, conversations, and to really sort of hone in on some of the questions that they want to, you know, speak about to employer. And the great thing is too, with the, as the job seekers are coming through the door, we've provided them like a swag bag of promotional information, but in the swag bag, it will have like an employer profile of all the employers that are at the job fair with their specific vacancies, along with a map of the day of where all of the employers will be sitting, so that they can sort of target which employers they would like to speak with and what positions are available, so they can sort of go to the specific groups immediately, instead of feeling like they're kind of just wandering around, who's there, what am I really interested? We really want to ensure that they know the purpose of coming there, and which employer they are targeting, and where they want to work.
And we also have services to help them with resume. If they come there, they cannot, we could help them, we have people who do that for them too, yeah.
So, all of our staff as career practitioners will be on, on, on site that day in our hub, where that will be taking place, resume updating, if they want to add something to their resume, and then, of course, have the employers go in that specific area, if they want to have just even an informal conversation, it gives them that opportunity as well.
All right, well, I have no questions myself, but on behalf of the municipality, thank you very much, and actually, I'm going to try to get out to attend, and anyone who says to me that there's no jobs out there, say you're wrong.
Absolutely, and send them our way too, and Dolores's way too, because we can definitely help in other ways besides that day, so, thank you so much.
Appreciate, appreciate it.
We appreciate it, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Liz, please make note that the Warden's taken over the chair.
In the time of expedient and so on, I was wondering if, because George has been sitting here, and we have, I believe it's under, under new business, item six, 6.2, Lake Vaughan Fire Department request for funding, and there's a briefing in there for, for council. I, and George, he's not here to make a presentation, but he's here to answer any questions, instead of him sitting until we finish all the other things to get through. Do you mind if we bounce up to that item and have your discussion? It's in your package, if you, you've already opened it up, I, I assume, and so on, but if the floor is open for, for questions and so on, and, George, if you want, you can come down and sit there and answer the questions if there is some directed at you and so on in that respect? It's time? I see why they're doing it, I see you have a request in, through the, the loans application that the municipality has and so on for roughly, was it 130, I think, on, on your tanker? And that tanker is going to, due to arrive when?
The initial date was September 28th of this year, but fortunately, I guess it got bumped up to April the 18th.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Is this new tanker going to have a stainless steel tank or a plastic tank, rather than the conventional steel, which I know you guys have right now, so it won't rust up?
The one that we actually have right now is aluminum, but now they replace them with what they call a poly tank, and they are lifetime waterproof.
Yeah, I thought so.
Counselor Cunningham.
All right, so our, our decision is to provide the loan of $130,000, is that correct?
Yes.
That's my understanding, okay?
I'm not sure, I have to direct that, how much can we?
Yes, well, yeah, there was a request that came in through the Lake Vaughan Fire Department, through our volunteer emergency service providers capital loan request policy process, and so we looked at the information and took the information and processed it, we've been in discussion with George a couple of times, because as he mentioned, the timing of the delivery has changed, which has put a bit of a kink into maybe their timelines a little bit, but probably on the positive side, I suppose, if we can achieve the loan document process. But nonetheless, there's a, there's just a short brief that I usually prepare for fire department loan requests in front of you with some of the pertinent information. It certainly meets all the requirements of the policy, they're funded quite well and seem to have the wherewithal to be able to, to meet their loan commitments, in fact, they've already paid a substantial amount down on the equipment. I don't see any reason not to provide the loan at this point, we would do it through our operating reserve process, as we usually do, so once it's approved by council, then we would just proceed with, given instructions to legal to proceed with the promissory documents in advance.
Go ahead, Counselor Cunningham.
All right, well, having said that, and was certain that was going to be the answer, I, I don't see any reason why at the committee, the whole level, after we ask the questions that council wants to ask, we wouldn't move this to our next regularly scheduled council meeting for, for approval. Fire, fire service and the volunteers, very, very important for the municipality, we've had this conversation, of course, around the council table many, many times, and the volunteer service of, of our community members and, and, and fire protection and, and safety of the community is very, very much valued, so I'm all in favor. Thank you.
That's good. Counselor Cushing.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, so are we going to go to the next, our next council to approve something like this? Is that what we do?
Go ahead, Greg, if you wish.
Yes, I believe you, you have to go to open council to make a, make the announcement, but.
Good cause, like Trevor said, they're very important volunteer fire departments, you do what we can.
Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
No, I, I personally have no problem with this, they're a very well-run fire department I've looked through here, seen some familiar names, the motion was made by Earl Renner and seconded by Blaine Smith to move forward with this, so I know they keep the public input, I do know they need the trucks, and I'm certainly here to help out in any way that I can, and you guys have proven over the years that you're quite diligent, have a very, your finances are run very, very tight, shit, that's for certain. I think you're a model for, for some other departments to follow, and we may be one of them, I think, sometimes, but you have some strong financials and good volunteers there, and I'm certainly willing to support, move this forward to our next regular council meeting. I do have one quick question though, is the payment due on the 18th? Or, or only the delivery?
The payment is due upon delivery, the truck will be completed on the 18th, and then they expect that there'll be two to three weeks of ULC testing, and then after that, there will be delivery and training, and that's when they expect to have the payment.
Okay, so, make, if, if council so wishes that we, if we approve the motion at our next regular council meeting on April, no, what is it?
March.
March.
March 28th.
March the 28th, that, that gives you plenty of time.
Yes.
Okay, just, just making that clear, thank you.
Well, I will just put a caveat in there, there are some legal processes to go through, but we'll, we'll, you know, we'll get those instructions to our council, and we'll work with those as fast as we can through that means, and then we'll keep George in, in the loop, and we'll execute as soon as, soon as we can, but you may have to fend off your supplier maybe for a couple of weeks, we're not sure yet, we'll see how that goes, but.
Well, like I said, I am sure that they would understand, because the original delivery date, September 28th.
The terms have changed, yeah.
They changed the date, so, so we didn't.
Yep. Okay, there's, where there's no further questions, I, I do want to make a comment, this is not your first request of the municipality, is it not?
No.
And I'm quite sure you were there as a volunteer fireman, then, do you remember all the details and how fast you paid off the?
We had, our original plan on the pumper was to pay it off in five years, and we paid it off in just a little bit over four, so, and I believe that from the board of directors, our original plan for this time is five years, hopefully we can do the same thing, so.
It's, you know, it, it's a good thing, they run, as the deputy wardens, they, I've been out there a few times, very good operation. Again, George, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to item number five, five point one. Copy a letter from the town of Middleton, Union of Nova Scotia Municipalities, possible name change. And this comes from our February committee with the whole meeting and so on. And I don't know where the municipality, Yarmouth, didn't really participate and we never sent any, any for or against the name change from UNSM, Union of Nova Scotia Municipalities, to their new acronym, which is Federation of Nova Scotia Municipalities. Okay, if you mark that down. What Middleton and, in, in according to Middleton and I know Saint Mary's and so on, they don't want it F N S M. They want it Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. Instead of F N S M, they are recommending that they change or have it N S F M. Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. They don't want, their, their thoughts is they don't want the federation word first, they want Nova Scotia first, Federation of Municipalities. Okay? I don't know if the municipality wishes to support, don't support, I, I don't know what your wishes are. Go ahead, Counselor Cunningham?
Um, I, I, I'm, I'm not particularly supportive of the, of, of the change. I think UNSM's done their, done their, done their work and they, they suggested the word F N S M, federation. And I think that more, I, I, I know the argument is, is, is contrary to what I'm going to say, but I think that more closely aligns to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. So for my part, I, I don't, I don't think the argument holds, holds water. I'm, I'm, I, I don't, I don't think that we should proceed with supporting this. I think that we, it's, it's at the UNSM level, they name the organization, and I think it's much to do about nothing. So I, I, I wouldn't be supportive of, of sending a letter in, 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 I, I just, I, my, my support is behind UNSM to make the final decision on this. I don't, I'm not contrary.
No, one way or the other.
One way or the other. So I'd, I'd say we just leave it here.
Okay. Deputy Warden?
I agree a hundred percent with my colleague here of what he stated. I, I'd stated earlier that I think we're spending too much time worrying about what an organization is named. They come up with the name, I, I personally have no problem with it. It's, the UNSM is a collaboration of all municipal units, so I, I don't want this to go no further.
Okay, thank you very much. We're open there. Then five point two, appointments to the signs committee and what is the wishes of council? Go ahead, counselor.
Well, I think I've expressed my concerns about the signs committee in past. My, my main concern was for the, for the, the lack of provincial signs that are, that are out there that are not displaying proper roads and, and whatnot, especially I, I know District Six is not the only one, but I'm concerned about the ones in, in District Six. But in, in escalating that, I think our other sign is that Counselor Cunningham had brought up about our specific, um, areas of interest within our municipality, in our, in our recreation areas and our parks and trails and stuff is, is also important. So I think the two should be tied together and I certainly like to be involved with that if I could.
Okay, so you're, you're submitting your name as a, to sit on that committee? Was there any other counselor that wishes to? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, counselor.
Um, yes, I would certainly be interested in sitting on the signs committee. I think I'd like to, to work with staff and look at how we can come up with some branding across the, the municipality to identify specific areas of, of interest.
Okay. Was there anybody else? The one, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, counselor.
Yes, uh, there was also discussion at one time about going into different communities, like when you're traveling down the three forty and you hit the community of Carlton, you'll see welcome to Carlton sign. Every once in a while someone plays a trick and they put a picture of Carlton Banks underneath of it, but that, that type of sign is, is very nice throughout the area. You see a lot of that in other municipalities, like if there's like a village or a point of interest or anything like that, there's a nice sign that's sitting there on the side of the road. It's, it's up kept by the community actually, but I, I think this is a, a good way to go. Like there's a lot of smaller communities, like welcome to Pembroke, and you might have like the picture of, of the drawbridge or something like that on there and it just gives someone a point. Yeah, Sanford, sorry. For some reason I got.
There, that's why we need a sign.
Out in the Carlton area, on, on they, when they says welcome to Carlton, there's like a picture of a cottage and, and things like that. And a little farther up in, in another community in the Clare, and it says welcome to Waymouth. Um, and then there's a, there's another sign there with someone there with a fishing pole and, and like a dam and stuff like that. So it's, there, there's a lot of good things that we could do with that and, and not just making, I'd like to see us move forward. I, fortunately, I cannot volunteer for this committee because my time is, has been used up on a lot of other communities, committees, but I would be willing to sit as an alternative if one of you could make it and you had a, a meeting. Because I know that, uh, I'm not sure if we have an alternate, but at least I'd like to put my name forward as an alternative.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to sit as a, as a member of the committee. I have an interest in, in that. And I think we'll also have to work on a mandate a little bit, maybe have that come back to council for approval because it's, it's bigger than the mandate of, of, of the previous signs committee. I think it envelops what we were previously doing, but I, I think that, that, that it's a, it's a little bit bigger and to Patty, to Counselor Durkey's point, needs to be a little bit more cohesive across the whole municipality and, and the, the signs piece is very important. I mean, we are tourist destination, so we'll reach out to our partners and get something that's a little bit more directed to, to accomplishing the goals that we need to accomplish.
Counselor Durkey?
I just want to stay, say that I think this would go a long way to help us market our area and I, I think that's something that we really need to work harder on. Um, we have so much to offer with, I'm not going to go into all the details because, but in all the areas that, that this would be the first step in showing everybody what we have.
The one counselor that isn't here, if, if anybody want to offer up his name to sit on this committee, you're free to do so. I, I, honest with you, I, I have a feeling that Gerard, if he was sitting here right now, today, that he would probably offer his name. I think he's, so, I'm going to take it upon myself and putting Gerard's name down. No, Gerard is very dedicated to anything that promotes and so on, so I'm quite sure he would, and if Gerard doesn't want to do it, I, I'll sit on there and I'll try to attend any of the meetings if the, when they're, you know, to lend support. It's, it's going to be, I think with just some of the ideas you've thrown here already, it's good. Okay, on, on that note, on that note, five point three, Lake Milo development, five point three one, Bridgewater waterfront, five point three point two, Bridgewater waterfront, there's pictures in there for your viewing, and I believe it is Counselor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Right, and, and there are, from, from the annals of history, there's, there are some around the, around the municipality, some conceptual drawings of a, of a boardwalk that were done quite some time ago by, by council, years ago, maybe twenty years ago. I, I'm not certain of when, when they were constructed. Pardon me?
Early nineties.
Early nineties. So this is a project that's been on people's minds for literally decades. Um, and, you know, we, I've, I've looked around online and, and was, happened to be in Bridgewater a few days back and took a series of pictures there, they're in the, some of them are in the, in the package and the, in the committee, the whole package. And Bridgewater probably has done, done a little project, well, not a little project, a little bit bigger than a little project, on their waterfront, riverfront, it's not exactly lakefront, but has a lot of the elements, um, for a start, on, 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 on a waterfront walkway. We all know Milo is a jewel in the, in, in, in the municipality, very close to the town as well. The town is, is thinking about extending its boardwalk further, further north. Um, and we have the, the asset of the Milo Boat Club there and, and lots of stuff goes on in, in the water for all municipal residents, not just residents of District Five, but there's, there's boating, there's kayak, kayaking, sailing, that, you know, people really don't have a good vantage point to view. So those, what's been done in Bridgewater does give some limited seating. And again, we have to, and also continuation of some kind of walkway on the other side of, or trail or something, uh, on the, on the outside of the guardrail moving on up the lake. So I, I, probably this is something to be phased in, but I think it's important to begin through staff to maybe get a firm, employ a firm to do some, 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 some work, some preliminary work in terms of what can we do with the, with the space we've got. That Bridgewater piece looks, that Bridgewater project looks pretty close to what, you know, if you ever get an opportunity, if you're going through Bridgewater, stop and look at it. I think that's probably, it's very, very well done. There are observation decks, multi-level, that type of thing. We've got a little bit less property obviously to work with, but again, our engineers, if, if we decide to move forward with the, with some, some of, of the real work that needs to be done to, to allow us to see what can be done, um, with the project, that, that'll, that'll inform it. And I think it would be a great project for the municipality and economic development because really we've got that wonderful lake and there's, there's really no way to, to enjoy it to the fullest extent possible. So I appreciate the support of, of all the other counselors and having staff move forward with the investigating it in a, in a, in a, in a serious manner and, and hopefully bringing the project to fruition over a number of years. Thank you.
Counselor Allen?
Yeah, um, I'm actually, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Trevor, or Counselor Cunningham. I, uh, we have a great asset out there in Lake Milo. And I guess my vision and yours probably aren't that much different. Um, that's a busy stretch of road. This could alleviate some of the walking, you know, we could put something along the edge as opposed to a sidewalk. Um, no, I, I, I think it's a great idea. I think we should be instructing, we should be moving forward somehow, maybe enlisting some help as to a design process or something. Um, I think it's a great idea. There, there's so many things we could do with that lake. And there are things that go on it now. I mean, there's fishing tournaments, there's people out, like you said, swimmers, kayakers. Um, yeah, no, I, I, I'm in total agreement with Counselor Cunningham on this.
Counselor Durkey?
I agree completely. We have this amazing asset so close to town where people can actually walk out there. Uh, we're going to have to look at parking certainly, but I would completely support. I think it's a great idea. Uh, I think it'll, could be appreciated by a lot of, uh, different people.
Okay, so I guess what I'm hearing is that we'd like to have staff, staff start doing a little, a little bit of work and maybe getting back to us possibly, but I won't say this time next month, but maybe, uh, we don't have anything on the books, do we? No, but in, yeah, we'll.
If I can, yeah, we just, well, to further the discussion along, we did talk about this in our, you remember in our capital investment plan meeting, and we agreed to maybe commit some resources in this year's budget to some preliminary design work and engineering work. Um, we also are going to try to attempt to stab at a connect to program for some funding to support some of that, although I wouldn't go to the bank with, with that. Um, and the other thing that we are doing is we just, I just was in a meeting yesterday that included the town, two, two planners from the town of Bridgewater in fact, so they are, and they are going to get me in touch with the, I guess the principals behind the Bridgewater experience and maybe they can share some information with us sometime in the future after their budget seasons behind us a little bit.
Okay. So it's on our radar, it's a start.
So it's definitely on the radar, yeah.
So we start moving there. Yeah, thank you, Trevor, appreciate it. Item number four, information from UNSM, sponsorship of FCM Conference twenty eighteen, which is being held in Halifax. Uh, there was a sponsorship guide, you had that, and we had thought of passing it or asking YASTA, and they came back with some recommendations. What is the wishes of the committee at this time? Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I was the one that was originally had asked to send this off to YASTA, see what they thought, and they put thing in here that was quite, quite illuminating at the very start regarding the FCM and advertisement. At this time, the FCM is not marketing channel for YASTA and they're not pursuing it. It is very expensive and, and that was the point there. And, and I had mentioned when I'd first seen this, uh, request that, yes, they're very expensive and it's, it's quite a, a small market, twenty-five hundred people compared to some of the marketing initiatives that YASTA does, which is in the tens of thousands. So I, I would prefer that we followed the advice of YASTA. And we should all remember that when we go to the FCM, that we are our own best advertisers. Make sure you bring your cards, your pins and everything else. There's a lot of people there that have a lot of same interests as you and, uh, send them down this way because it's, we've done it before and we can certainly do it again. But I, I would, I prefer that we follow the advice of YASTA and not move forward.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Cunningham?
Uh, I agree with what Counselor Cunningham said. That was, I think, um, a, a wise piece of advice he gave, the council meeting, send along YASTA and their, 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 their letter back to us sort of confirms why, why they're not willing to pursue that makes sense. Uh, and, uh, again, I mean, I'd, I'd, I'd love to be able to, to throw my support behind this, but having said that, I, I don't think that there's enough value in it and it is, it is quite a costly endeavor for a, for a convention that's, even though it's happening place, happening in, in Atlantic Canada and Nova Scotia, it's something I don't believe represents or is defensible as a good use of taxpayers' money. So I, I'm, I'm going to side with, with the deputy warden and, and suggest that we not take this any further.
Okay, I guess sharing that, then that's where, that is where we're going to move to. We're not going to participate. Item number five point five, invitation from campaign to protect offshore Nova Scotia to attend a meeting on March twenty first at two fifteen in Shelburne. I, I noticed that a couple of counselors have already committed to, I believe, the twenty first, which is the, the job, job search day or whatever at Burridge and the time, pardon me? Yeah, and that's at the same time, two fifteen, while the job, job fair is at three and so on. I will be attending and Greg and myself have discussed it and so on to a small extent. This is the group that was in and we had met and they talked to us. And I just want to keep connected to their information because this Friday it's, uh, the Canadian Nova Scotia Offshore Petroleum Board is holding a information session at the Best Western in Bridgewater, which I put into my calendar. I didn't know if anybody else wished to attend, but it was good to go down and to listen to exactly what they're, they're saying. They have invited a lot of the other municipalities from Digby Clear and so on. And thank you to Counselor, or the deputy warden, uh, when he sent that, he noticed that the town of Lockport hadn't been included and they emailed me back that they would get in touch with the town of Lockport and invite them also. But it's all the way around the southwest Nova Scotia participating. So I didn't know if anybody else wished to, to go down, it's just an information. Uh, we don't have any stance or we're not participating as per se. I just want to know, and when I spoke with them, it is basically we, the municipality of Yarmouth, is very concerned about protecting the, the offshore industry, which is fishing and so on. And this, where BP is basically going to be drilling, as you're well aware, is more towards, up towards Halifax and so on, but it still can impact the livelihoods of a lot of fishermen all the way around. So I, I do plan on attending on our behalf. Go ahead, Counselor Cushing?
Um, I believe everybody knows my feelings about the support of the fishing industry. I certainly wanted to attend this, this Friday, but I had I certainly wanted to attend this, this Friday, but I had made prior commitments to, to deputy Warden Cunningham, that if he couldn't make a certain meeting on Carlton Walls and Watership, the meeting on Friday, that I would take his spot, and he, since he can't make it, so I'll be attending that one, but I would, it was, it would certainly be a good, just good to see what they have to say, so. Not that I didn't want to go.
Councillor Allen?
Yes, I'm interested in going to this.
Okay.
Of course, it depends, depends on my fishing schedule, but is, is it this Friday in Bridgewater?
This, this Friday.
At what time?
At, at 2 o'clock, where am I in here, God. Yes, 2 to 4.
I think I'm available this Friday. I don't, I don't believe in going to be fishing, I, I'm definitely interested in going, if you gentlemen are going, I might hook a ride. Or I can, or I can meet you there.
No, or, or we can go, you got a brand new Ford, don't you?
Yeah, but I don't know if it'll make it.
Oh.
Yes, I'm sure between the three of us, we could definitely, yeah, I'm interested for sure.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk later on Saturday, okay, thank you. Okay, we're into item number six, which is business, letter from the epilepsy association of Nova Scotia. I believe some of us are wearing, wearing the purple ribbons, there is a request that we wear the purple ribbons through the month of March. I know there, that Liz has her camera ready for this afternoon after we're, through our meeting to take a picture, they like to have it so they can publish it and so on. Was there any questions or concerns on that? Hearing none. Item number two, the Lake Vaughan, we've already done. Item 6.3, Mariner Centre Concert Proposal. What is the wishes of the council? Deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, as we all know, this is going to be on our joint council agenda meeting, so I'd like to defer any decision on this or moving, I would not want to move this forward or make any decision until all councils are met to find out where we're going to be going with this. Because this, in my opinion, is, is one of the reasons why we have the joint council meeting.
Okay.
So I would, I don't know, I can't make a motion here, but I don't know if we should defer this or defer this until our next committee of the whole meeting in, in April?
You could.
Maybe that's what we should do.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Item 6.4, Tri-County Women's Centre and Leahy Wellness Clinic fundraiser, putting on the Ritz, that was me. This, this function fundraiser that they're going to be putting on is going to be held at the Yarmouth Airport at 8:00 PM on April 7th. I would be one that would go to that, but I've already made a commitment to my local community to support them on April 7th. So, the tickets are $25 apiece, I would hope where it is at the airport, it is a fundraiser, there is an auction and so on, it's taking place 50/50 draw and so on, there is live music and so on. So, I, I think it's something that we should support, and, you know, if you wish to participate, we could purchase tickets, is that something that can, Greg, that's?
I guess we could, if we needed to, yes.
Yeah, I mean, if, I don't want to put you on the spot, I didn't know, I, I, if council is going, it's come out to a request of council to participate, so if councillors wish either way and so on. I, I would attend, I'll be honest with you, I would have been attending and so on, but I'd already made a, a commitment months ago to the 7th, and I, I can't, but it's there, you guys decide.
I, I don't know, this is, there's not an ask here, I don't think, from them specifically for, for example, along the lines of grant funding, so.
Yeah.
But I guess if you wanted to attend, you probably could find accommodations within your individual travel budgets.
Okay, there's, there's a couple that wish to attend, so we'll, we'll work it from there. Okay, no, you have a question, did you, Trevor?
I was just saying that, that, the, the, the cost is pretty limited, so I don't know if there's any need to, need to go through council, I think we just pay our own ticket cost and, and volunteer to go if we wish, and, and I, I think all attend, so it seems like a very, very good cause, and I've seen my Saturday evenings open, so that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Can I just, excuse me, can I just, for, so just for clarity for staffs, and so, as I understand it, there's no more action required of staff?
Right.
You'll just take it upon yourselves to attend and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. 6.5, for your information, UNSM board report from March 2nd, you had that in your package, was there any concerns or anything? I don't see no lights lit up, so. 6.6, grant request, 6.1, Yarmouth Hospital Foundation Spring Gala, April 28th. 6.6.2, Firefighters Museum of Nova Scotia, and 6.6.3, Highland Gun Club. What is your wishes on those? There may be your spring gala, April 28th, that's just, I'll say, a, a month and a half away, I don't know, I, I know we've supported it in the past with a table, so. Go ahead deputy Warden?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, I was just going to bring that up on the spring gala on April 28th. I know that's something that we've granted in the past, and, and I see no problem with this, so what I'm prepared to do is, I'd like to move that specific request to a regular council meeting for a possible approval for next year's grants and budgets applications. And as far as the other two, the Highland Gun Club and the one like that, we'll just move that to the budgetary procedure, because we have in the past supported this, number one, and number two, and we have in the past allocated that money in next year's grants request, so we know we've already spent it, so that's what I propose we do if, if other councillors are agreeable to that.
Councillor Allen, you had your, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with John, I, I, the only thing I did want to mention is the Highland Gun Club, I think this is a new, a new request for us. I've been, I've had Sean Dontrommans been in contact with me about this, so I just want to put it on your radar, this is a big event they're going to be hosting, but we, it should be deferred to a regular grant.
When, I, I read it, but I, I don't have a, a long-term memory when it comes to that, when is the, their event?
Their event, I'm not exactly sure on the date, I just know it's coming up this summer. And there, there's two events they're hosting, they're hosting in Atlantic and a maritime, or Atlantic and a Nova Scotian.
Yeah, well, I think their, in their request was so for some infrastructure work or something?
It's, I believe it's for some infrastructure work out at the gun club.
Yeah.
Anyways, no, I, I'm very happy to put this forward to, to our, you know, our regular.
In the Highland Gun Club, that is?
That's it, out on the Greenville Road.
Well, I thought when I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just up through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm, they're expecting a lot of shooters, they're expecting over 100 shooters, I believe, so it should be quite an event, yes.
Okay. Okay, then I, there was nothing else on the agenda, that includes the agenda, can I have a, a motion to adjourn? Okay, thank you.